Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this medium Independent School District 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a form for us, please?
This is really Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. Stephen Vegasah.
Will be shortly.
Okay, so we do have a form.
Thank you. We have in front of you is our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. We will move into reports. Our first report is going to be from Ryan Johnson, our IQ Academy, and essa report.
Do I go up here?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. See, I think you guys are a little familiar with the Every Student Succeed Act Plan that we had to put together. IQ and the ALC were identified for graduation rates below 67%. We've had the privilege to work with the Regional Center of Excellence through Lake's Country this past year. We've been fortunate. Kristi Sullivan has been our facilitator. She also teaches public speaking through IQ Academy. So that's been great, having her expertise in that area as well. So it's been a great learning experience. We've had a team of nine IQ staff that have been working throughout the year. Kind of spearheaded last spring, kind of knowing we're going to be identified for a graduation rate, kind of assembling a team together, then working through that process. So I'm fortunate to have a great group to work with at IQ Academy. I believe the link was shared with you before. It's kind of two main documents. The Continuous Improvement Plan, which kind of has the outline of what we want to do, where we're going to go, and the Comprehensive Needs Assessment, which is that document that the state wants completed. So the root cause that we determined was student disengagement. Really looking at, our students have a lot of other options. We have many, especially high school students, that are working regular hours as well. So kind of investigating what can we do there to help them be more successful and graduate. So our prioritized concern is supporting student engagement through positive interactions with supportive adults at school. Kind of our best practice, we're going to use Mieres 2.0. That's, Mieres 2.0 will look at data. You can get whatever source that you want to use. I'd say at IQ, we're data-rich. We've also, we can drill down into the number of minutes a student spends on specific content. So we're going to use Mieres 2.0. The team's going to continue to look at what data we really want to pull from yet this spring. As you guys know, this plan is due March 1st, but then we'll continue to grow and tweak this. The state really wants it to be a living document. So our goal will be to increase our graduation rate from 41% to 55% by 2021. You know, with open enrollment year-round, our numbers really fluctuate. The number of seniors we have, it's around 60 right now. So we're looking at that. Kind of the data points we're looking at, attendance, we've already done some work this year. Kind of getting our, it's not in this document, but kind of our five, 10, 15 day no login to specific courses. And we have emails that are generated at that point. If they're failing a class, they haven't logged into that course content itself at five, 10, 15 days, emails are being sent to those families, as well as if they miss their live Class Connects. They have one live class each week. So when they get to the thresholds of six, 12, and 18, we're sending letters as well, kind of escalating the consequences with that. Behavior, you know, outward behavior online isn't really an issue. Behavior is not logging in. So really looking to build those connections with students. And then course completion. We have student track information that I think we'll be using. That gives us weekly what students are failing each class and how many classes. So I think that'll be a big piece to our Mieres data. Is looking at that list. Expectations for teachers are to call monthly if they're failing their class. So that's kind of will be our first step. And again, the team's going to tweak this, but just kind of thinking in my head. Then step two, going to our high school team. What those interventions will look like, we'll see. We began using Zoom, which is web-based online meeting platform. Blackboard. At times, it can be kind of clunky and slow. There can be a 10, 15 second gap. And when you hear yourself on the recording, if the students have their microphone open as well. So we've been looking at Zoom maybe to make those personal connections our elementary. K through 5 are using them extensively already and gotten good feedback from the staff on that. So those are possibilities. Yeah, so our leadership will continue the work to develop those thresholds and the interventions that we're going to use and how to reach kids and continue to reach out to them. I guess at a point where kids are making a choice, but hopefully through some of these interventions, they're aware of their grades, but hopefully we can continue to encourage them to be successful and graduate. Online is a good opportunity for many of the students. You know, it might be kind of their last. They've tried other options, so kind of ebbs and flows. Some days, I get frustrated that they're not logging in, and other times, there's a lot going on in their lives as well. Let me get a challenge. Any questions?
Is 60-ish students, is that pretty common? I mean, from year to year, you kind of said it ebbs and flows, but would you say that's a good number?
Yep, we continue to grow each year with that open enrollment. We're a K-12 school, and there are three other, or two other K-12 schools in Minnesota. And they close their enrollment, so now come the end of March, we'll get all of those K-12 students. So each year, we seem to be start at a higher number in the fall and finish at a higher number in the spring. So it could be anticipated to be around 800 down the school year.
But for the seniors, that 60 range?
We're at 650-ish right now?
658.
Yep.
About 130 of those are part-time individual students.
Got to add one question just on the presentation. So it's six weeks without a live connect, which could be, or six?
Six sessions.
Sessions, that's.
Yep, they have six a week.
They have six a week, live sessions? Okay, so it's once a week if they haven't logged in for that week?
If they miss all of them for that week, yeah.
Okay.
Because the state statute is seven unexcused.
Yep.
We would be sending emails constantly. I'm not sure, maybe you guys saw as well that K-12 did approve a truancy position for IQ. So we're currently posting for that as well. Because now with these letters, that takes, takes a lot of time, especially working with metro counties, that what they want for their truancy filing, it's quite extensive, so. We can get that position.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Kristen Tool, ALC, and essa report.
You have a hard copy, great. Get your spot.
And the first few pages of the hard copy that you received are the directions and the specifics. So I think if you flip about two or three pages, you'll get to the meat or the heart of the document. And so I'm going to just jump into our school improvement plan. Ryan did a nice job giving you the overview of why we're required to do this. Our current graduation rate is 33%, and the threshold is 67%. And so our goal at the Area Learning Center with the school improvement plan is to raise our graduation rate from 33.3% to 50% by the year 2020. Our team consisted of our core content teachers. We have two half-time, well, the increase there, English teachers, and then a full-time math teacher, a full-time social studies teacher, and a full-time science teacher. We have a full FTE special education teacher, noting that our special education percentage is 32%. When the district's percentage hovers around 16%. And then also our high school counselor that spends about three hours with us each week was a part of our team, and then myself. And so the root cause that we identified through our CNA was unsupportive school policies. There's a lot of issues that our students have to address or face that are out of our control. And that was the one area that we felt as a team after evaluation that we felt we could make an impact on. And so the three strategies that we chose were the Mieres 2.0, which is an evidence-based practice approved by MDE. Mieres stands for the Minnesota Early Indicator Response System. It has been around for, I would say, probably about, I don't know, six years or so. And when I used it in the past, it was a very good indicator when I would get that list of ninth graders at risk for not graduating. And then, you know, they would become ALC students, and then those that did not meet the mark and did not graduate. It was always spot-on. And it is basically based on attendance, behavior, and coursework. And with the 2.0, that allows us to, well, specify that identifier specific to our Area Learning Center. So for instance, students at the Area Learning Center gain graduation or course completion credit through the coursework they do, but if they don't finish by the end of a time period, a marking period, or a semester, they can still retain the credit they've earned for the portion of the course that they have completed. And so that would be one of the indicators that we would want to use in our Mieres report is if we have a student that right now we've had midterms, they should have earned approximately between 12 and 15, what we call units, in each one of their core classes. If they haven't met that threshold, then that's an indicator that they're not meeting the pacing guideline. And usually that's due to, you know, some other factors. But we would identify them before, you know, the midterm.
What's a typical course load?
Well, seven and a half credits.
Okay.
We have an advisory program in which students meet with an advisor for 23 minutes, and so they earn a half a credit per semester. So here at Kennedy, students can earn seven credits per semester. At the ALC, they can earn seven and a half, so 15 a year versus 14. So that's just one more piece of credit recovery built into the school day, which is critical for our graduation. It has to be ways that we can do that within the school day. Our second strategy that we identified was revising school policy regarding credit accumulation towards graduation. And that we identified in three different areas. The earning of partial credit in a course from a traditional school setting when a student transfers in the middle of a marking period. So if they don't transfer to the ALC at the beginning of a semester, either the fall or the spring semester, midway giving credit for what they had done in that traditional setting, and then communicating that to not only Fergus Falls, but our outlined districts too. Because the Area Learning Center is not just a Fergus program, it's a district. Or, I mean, not just a district program, it's an area program. Another area would be in our digital curriculum blended learning courses in which we use digital curriculum to meet the individual needs of students when we don't have enough of a group for a class or the availability of an FTE or a teacher to teach that. So we use digital curriculum. Previously, we had set our passing rate at a minimum of 70%. When our district's passing rate for credit, not that, you know, as teachers we like this, it's a hard one to swallow, but is 60%, a D minus. So that's one adjustment we've already made. In our digital curriculum courses, students for passing may pass at a 60%. And then also reviewing the local credits required by Fergus Falls for graduation. Oftentimes, we have a hard time providing those courses at the Area Learning Center. And Area Learning Center students are welcome to take courses here at Kennedy Secondary School, but that is often a difficult choice. And so the area that we have the most difficulty in is facts. Intro to Tech Ed, we never go back and enroll kids in that course if they haven't passed it previously. And students coming from incoming districts, sometimes they'll graduate and meet the requirements of their home district, or they'll meet the Fergus Falls requirements. And so looking at those accommodations as well. And then our third strategy was just to make data an ongoing cycle of our instructional improvement. And that really focuses around PLC time for our Area Learning Center staff. Previously, our Area Learning staff have not participated in their own, in our own PLC. So we do have staff meetings, but it's been hard to carve out the time to do the deep dive data instructional review that you need to, to make impactful changes. So that's one of the needs of resources moving forward. You have any questions?
So is it, a lot of the, when it says unsupportive school policies, is that just more, you're talking about how credits are accumulated? Is that, is that the big issue? Is this because they take longer to get through some of these courses?
Yes, that's part of it, yeah. Yeah, that's the primary focus. And sometimes too, it's the flexibility in our time schedule too, and just working with kids and different needs. We are fortunate that we do have, you know, those mental health resources located in our building. Colleen Kennedy from Lakelaw Mental Health is there one and a half days a week, looking to go to two next year. Brian Warren, the school-based social worker mental health person, he's in our building a half a day, I would say almost every single day. And without those types of resources, for a lot of our students, it would be hard to function within that traditional six-hour school day. And then, you know, also, as we look at behavior infractions and how we address those, that's a part of the unsupportive school policies as well.
Is that the ALC policies, or is that like the district policies that you guys are talking about?
I would say it's how the ALC.
Okay.
And part of what we're looking at would be a more restorative justice format.
Okay.
But at this point, you know, like Ryan stated, this is a living document, and that's one of our long-term goals. It's not included in this specific document right here with our goal for 2020.
Okay.
But that would be the long-range piece.
Okay.
The also, the other piece is the element of time. You know, how many hours in a seat and that type of thing. And I know that the Minnesota Department of Ed is looking at that element of time and how much that really relates to the credit accumulation of students and the barrier to accumulating that credit as well. When our attendance is evaluated, the state's definition is 95%. That's pretty tough.
So 95% during, during school?
Well, their consistent attendance definition is 95% or better. So our attendance rate is 25%. So when I looked at our data at the end of November, November 30th, our attendance overall was 84%. With our freshman population, population, it was only six was the lowest in the 70s because we had one kid that, you know, was not coming to school at all. And especially when we get kids, I mean, that's the nature of our student body, is kids that are having difficulties in attendance, behavior, and coursework, basically, for myriad of, you know, reasons.
Right.
I think the word unsupportive is the one that kind of.
Yeah, I know.
What do you mean, we're unsupportive? It's, it's school policies that are negatively affecting graduation rates.
Right.
So where, where can they, we still have high standards, but where can we be flexible with the policy? Because the ALC is unique compared to this high school. So I think that's something that we'll be looking from the ALC to make a presentation to the board on what type of policies, what do we have to change, what, all those types of things. So that would be a step coming down the road.
Wouldn't you say you're drawing from other area schools? What, can you, are you able to tell us what districts, other districts we have students attending from?
Yep, Underwood, Battle Lake, Rossay. And a lot of it is, well, a good portion, it seems like the last two years, are kids that have left Fergus and gone to those other outlined districts, and then have come back. But the percentage of outlined students is small.
Okay.
I'd say it's less than 10%. You know, primarily, our students come here from Fergus Falls.
Sure.
But we too have seen a growth in our enrollment. Our cap is 64, and this year, we've been in the high 70s into the low 80s. And been very consistent in that range. And each year, as Ryan stated, we end higher and we start higher.
Just for my knowledge, so other districts, I mean, we have the, we have this, the other districts have programs similar to this?
No.
I mean, how unique is this? Is it, we're the only one in Minnesota?
No.
Oh, no. Regional centers typically have an ALC.
Oh, okay, got you. That's why you pull.
And there's different types too. Breckenridge has an ALP, and that's what we were, you know, 15 years ago, before we moved to an Area Learning Center.
Sure. I imagine the other districts that have this are having the same kind of issues with affecting.
In fact, in essa, most of the programs that were identified were alternative learning centers.
Yeah.
Because the average graduation rate for alternatives across the state of Minnesota is around 32 to 34%.
And it just hasn't been anything state, at the state level legislation-wise, that has given a break for these centers is kind of the.
Correct. There's been some, some movement in the last, I would say, five years. You know, and three years ago in legislation, they changed the rule where kids, when they enter the Area Learning Center, are placed at the grade level in which they've earned credit, which was a game changer as far as the MCAs. Because we used to have juniors that had not even finished intermediate algebra be required to take that test, and they were, you know, so we had to do this, like, we used to call it Superman math, where they got a dose of all three of the math classes, you know, within a semester, trying to quickly prepare them to take that class. And we no longer do that.
You'd have to, this is a four-year graduation rate.
Right.
Super seniors, you know, 50-year, 6-year seniors, the, our graduation rate does go up. They do finish.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a great, I mean, it's great for the kids. I just wish that you guys got credit for the work you're, you know, you're doing. Because if a kid takes longer, it almost, it hurts you guys as an organization.
Right.
Although it's what's best for the kid, to not rush them through four years of school when that's not the pace that they need to go at.
Right.
You know?
Well, there's usually other things that need to be addressed before they can engage academically.
Right, sure, the mental health thing.
Other questions? Thank you. Our next report will be from Scott Kolbeck, elementary principal for Adams and Sidney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think it's been a while since I've been here. I think the last time principals gave reports, I missed that meeting, so good to see all of you again. So as I stand before you tonight, our teachers are busy and hard at work, conferencing with their parents this evening. As I walked about the buildings at McKinley and Adams today, I was just reminded of all of the good student work that our teachers have our students do. And there's a lot of things posted in the hallways, and our buildings look really nice. I'd just like to thank the teachers for the work that they do with their students every day, leading up to conferences and then getting their work displayed. So I hope our parents appreciate that as well. I think they do. So besides tonight with parent-teacher conferences, we also have conferences all day on Thursday and all evening on Thursday. So really, it's a short week for our students. Students come to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week. But our staff work the evening tonight and evening Thursday, as well as all day Thursday. If you were to go to the buildings of McKinley, or Adams, or Cleveland this evening, and you walked into the teacher's lounge, you'd be amazed by the spread of food that's in those three staff lounges tonight. And that is thanks to our fantastic parent-teacher organization. So thank you to our PTO. I know I stand up here many times, recognizing them and thanking them, but I don't think they can be thanked enough for the good work that they do in supporting our students and our staff at our elementary schools. So I think you guys have a work session and you're getting some food tonight, but if not, you know where there's some good food. You're always welcome in the elementary schools. Seems like I talk about map testing often, and that's probably because we, we test three times a year, fall, winter, spring, and happy to say that we just wrapped up winter map testing. So our computer labs are now free again and open to our classroom teachers to bring their students to. So we've been through our testing here, and we'll do that again here in the spring. Last Friday, a couple Fridays ago, February 15th, we had a fun celebration at McKinley School. We brought all 10 sections of kindergarten classes there, and we celebrated the 100th day. Not one, but two superheroes showed up to school on that day. Zero the Hero brought a friend, Spider-Man, to make sure that the students understood that Zero the Hero does have some friends as well. So here's what happened on that day, so I'm told, because I never seem to be there when these visits take place. But Mrs. Lil, the excellent fire teacher at McKinley School, she was juggling with Zero the Hero five tennis balls between the two of them. Apparently, it was quite impressive. And the idea behind that activity and the superpower that was handed out to the kids that day was that of perseverance, the idea of never giving up. And now what I was told by staff members is, as they were juggling, it wasn't really Mrs. Lil that was messing up, but Zero the Hero somehow was kind of throwing her under the bus a little bit.
Oh, yes.
And telling the kids.
I was there, I have it on video.
And telling the kids that, oh, no, Mrs. Lil, it's okay. But you have perseverance, and you're never going to give up, so we're going to try this again. As Zero the Hero was turning around and chasing a tennis ball that way. So we had a good time celebrating the 100th day of school. And so that continues. Couple upcoming events in March. Again, thank you to our PTO for sponsoring this group. But Klein Theater, a professional, professional theater group out of the cities, is coming on up on March 8th to do a performance at McKinley at 9:30, and Adams School at 1:30. The performance is around the theme of self-control. And the title of the performance is Tallulah Rabbit. Tallulah Rabbit. So whatever Klein Theater does, they're very good, and we're looking forward to their, to their visits. Also coming up in March, on March 14th, and if this is as good as it was last year, it will be a tremendous success, but the Adams School staff are putting on a book fair. And that'll be from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on March 14th. Last year's theme was a Western theme. I learned today that this year's theme, I'm not sure how they're going to pull this off, but this year's theme is dinosaurs. So I look forward to seeing how creative the staff can become. There's talk of some blow-up dinosaur costume that somebody can be kind of walking around in, so that'll be fun. And then another important event to our school district every year is the annual kindergarten registration. That's on Monday night, March 18th. That's in our McKinley School Gymnasium. We bring in our, I think it's the class of 2032, if I have that right, 2032. And I think, you know, if, if we look at the math, it seems like about 65% of our incoming kindergarten class will usually show up to the night of kindergarten registration. So it's a good start, and then we have some work to do after that to track down and find these kids that will be attending kindergarten in the fall. We keep adding different things to our night of registration that we think make it just a little bit more festive and a little bit better each year. One of the things that we're going to add this year is we're going to have, we're going to have someone there signing parents up for their early childhood screening. So this was actually. So this was actually a great idea by Molly Danielson. She gave me a call and she said, hey, how about if I show up to the night of kindergarten registration, I'll set up a table, I'll touch base with all of the families that come in, I'll check my list, I'll see if we've already done the early childhood screening for their child, and if we haven't, we'll get that, we'll get that scheduled that night. So I thought, what a great idea. And we'll have her there and just one more thing that we can maybe take care of that, that evening, so. With that, I'll entertain any questions from the board.
So for the screenings, did you, are you finding that there's quite a few kindergarteners that don't have that screening coming in to school? Or is it?
No, we usually get that taken care of and get them tracked down and get that done. But it would sure be nice if we can just catch a bunch of them.
Right.
As early as March eighteenth.
Sure.
Instead of trying to, you know, get that taken care of in the summer months, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I had a chance to, one other day, to be the mystery reader for Miss Hannah for fifteen minutes. And so, yeah, that's quite an experience. Kids were all very well behaved and they, they listened and they had questions, of course. And they participated and it was, it was kind of fun. I read three books and made a good time, so kind of wanted to participate.
So you were at, at McKinley in a kindergarten classroom? Okay. So did you get questions or stories?
A lot, a little bit of everything. Can you guess what my name is? I tried to guess what one of the names was and then I was starting seventeen of them wanted me to guess what their name was.
Oh, yeah.
Good for you.
And that's one of the, that's one of the nice things about the month of February, I love it to read month. And a lot of our teachers will have a guest reader of the day or a mystery reader, and oftentimes it's parents. And so, you know, when kids can have a, a new face, a different voice, a different experience, they, they appreciate that very much.
Sure. I hope you do again.
Oh, so you visited a first grade classroom? Sure.
In March is Dr. Suits.
Oh. Yeah. Well, thanks for, thanks for doing that.
Our next report's from Dean Monkey, our secondary school principal.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, we heard those reports on the, that's a document that needed to be completed here from both Tristan and Ryan, and I just have to compliment them on the work they did over the course of this year. It was kind of a race from what we knew in August to having this due here now on March first. And can't tell you enough how hard those folks were putting their teams together and putting in a lot of time, so thank you to them for that. And secondary school also has conferences here tonight and all day on Thursday and Thursday night. And so we invite everybody out there who's listening in here to please show up. Especially in relationship to those high school conferences. We're still just at the start here of our second semester and we had just a great time to stop in and see how your student is doing in their particular high school classes there as well. We did send out a bunch of postcards as special invitations to invite our high school parents in. So if you happen to get one of those cards, do please know that everybody's invited, but especially those parents that received a postcard on an invitation. And then, you know, in December, we thought we kind of raced through Concert Month. Well, now we have March. So let me quickly go through these in March for you so you can keep up with this, because one of these has been rescheduled. But we have Monday, March fourth, for a middle school choir concert. These are all at seven o'clock in the auditorium here. We have Monday, March eleventh, for a middle school orchestra concert. We have Monday, March eighteenth, for our all-school band concert, and because that is such a large group, we hold that in the Gold Gymnasium. And then Monday, March twenty-fifth, we've rescheduled our high school choir concert that was originally scheduled for tonight. We had so many missed days, so many students out and about, they wanted to reschedule that from a month from now to that Monday night. So if you just come here at seven o'clock, Monday night in March, you'll be able to hear something. Show up in the auditorium room there. And then, of course, we had a great weekend. Congratulations to Dustin Portalis for wrestling, heavyweight champion for the section. Our swimmers and divers, we have about eight students there that are headed to the state meet here. And we are going to have a send-off for those folks at two forty-five on Wednesday. Public is invited, come on in for both wrestling and swimming. And of course, at the same time, we're going to recognize our girls' hockey team as they came back from this last weekend. Constellation champs up there. And I think all of us were doing the math here in relationship to two oh against Breck. Is a little better than, what was it, five one and?
Six one.
Eleven to one or something like that, yeah. So you can put that Constellation championship right there in second place if you want to, and I think we'd be justified with that. So that's fantastic. And then also, we're going full speed ahead here in relationship to registering our high school students for next year. Our counseling office has just got a few more to catch up on. I've got my computer sitting over there and I'm already looking at numbers that they've already collected, so it's fun to get that information back. You know, I throw out just one example here. I think we've talked in the past about our nursing assistance CNA program. We already have tentative registrations of forty-three for next year. We can only take thirty because there's specific requirements in relationship to clinicals and size. So I've already got, you know, notes out and questions out to our local providers here to see if they'd be willing to help us fund and expand that program so that we could get more of our students interested in getting in there. So I think it's, it's all a pass-through, so the funding stream, as long as we can justify and get students to complete the program and get out there in the workforce, they get the money all back and Mark sends out a bill. And so it's a really, it's a great partnership out there in the community. And it's an absolutely wonderful chance for some of our high school students to get some work hours in, in a, you know, pre-medical kind of setting, and it's a great experience for everybody. So we're hoping to look to expand that program then for next year. And I just share that with you as an example of the different things that are happening as we look to register our kids for next year and see all those pleasant numbers. We know some of those numbers are going to rise just based on more kids in our high school for next year, but we're looking forward to putting that puzzle together. And then finally, when we get through March there, I believe it's Tuesday, April second, will be an ACT test for all of our juniors. We allow them an opportunity to take that ACT test once here, sponsored by the school district and the state. It's a great opportunity for our juniors to get that test under their belt at least once. Some of them take it two or three times just to improve on their composite scores. But it's a great opportunity for those families and kids to get that completed. So we'll look to do that shortly, about a month from now. Questions?
Can you give people a little bit of hope and tell them when the spring sports start?
Uh, yeah, yeah. See, spring sports are all, we're getting scheduled to start on March eleventh.
Dean, where's the send-off on Wednesday? Is that in the Gold Gym?
That's, that's in the Gold Gym. Derek Abrams, our activities director, has done a fantastic job with, he has been, the last time our girls went, he took them out to the elementary schools, so they did a little parade of champions there. They walk them through our middle school here, so everybody gets a chance to kind of participate. And then we all meet down in the Gold Gym at about two forty-five here on Wednesday to recognize our girls' hockey and get our wrestlers and swimming people off, so. Yes, please come and join us. It's a, it's a blast. Save about twenty minutes and we'll be out of here, so wonderful.
All right, Dean, thanks. Our last report goes with Super Ten S.
Yes, I'm going to concentrate on my MRA meeting that I was at with the Board of Directors with MRA, with the Rural Education Association. Our Commissioner of Education, Mary Catherine Ricker, she has a lot of energy and enthusiasm for education and she, she was, it was, it was good. She spent eighty minutes with us and, and really talked about the governor's budget. She is definitely a pro-budget for education. It's one of his clear indicators of where he is focusing his dollars. He is proposing seven hundred and thirty-three million additional dollars going into the E-12 budget. Key things, three percent on the formula, the first year, two percent on the second year. Excuse me, special education, looking at seventy-seven million increase over the biennium. And what he, what they're trying to do is stop this cross-subsidy from growing even, even larger. And so that's the dollars there. They're looking at save schools revenue. It's at thirty-six dollars, going nine dollars next year, nine more dollars the following year. There's some flexibility in, in those funds, using it for things, as you can use it for facilities, for staff, how you see fit. Let's see here, some other things, some mental health grants. There's a lot of things in here. But those, the first ones that I mentioned were mostly the funding ones, so that, that is the budget part of that. Later in our agenda, we'll be talking about makeup days and things there, so I'll just stop with that as we're running along here.
Any questions for Super Ten S? Okay, we'll move on to the resolution of acknowledgements, and Missy Herbie's just been ready to present.
Yes. Should I say that? I offer the following. We have a thank you to Jamie Anderson and Akehro Howgie and Linda Sauer for their generous donations to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. And congratulations to the Otter Girls Hockey Team on their Constellation State Championship win, along with congratulations to players Jade Zirdan and Hallie Sheridan for being named All-Tournament, players Sophie Rousch and Hallie Sheridan for being named All-State, and Coach Tim Lil for being named Class A Coach of the Year. And congratulations to additional state participants, swimmer and divers, Tristan Trosvik, Tyler Hanson, Will Palowski, Titus Seeland, Sean Edmund, Evan Erlinson, and Caleb Newbauer, and wrestler Dustin Portalis. And congratulations to the Otter Girls Hockey Team and the Otter Gymnastics Team for their work in the classroom. Girls Hockey Team won the Six A Section All-Academic Award with a combined GPA of three point eight five. And the gymnastics team won the Section All-Academic Gold Award with a combined GPA of three point nine seven. I offered that resolution and moved for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Steve is the second. Any discussion? Walkout, please.
Natalie Knudsen, yes. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Herbie's, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes for the February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen regular school board meeting, and our special board meeting held February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Personnel.
Oh, yes, I'm up. Just a couple changes this time. We have the support staff retirement of Connie Torgerson in our cafeteria. Her last day of work will be three fifteen. And then her replacement, we just hired, would, will be Brooke Coleman. She will start next week and get trained in prior to Connie's departure. And then we also have Nikki Monum, who will be, our request to have hired as our cafeteria server three hours a day at Kennedy Secondary School, taking the place of Brynnne Phosworth, who will move to another position due to earlier resignation. So I recommend all those four. For approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. We have no old business, moving on to new business, we have the IQ Academy, FY nineteen SF Plan. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second then.
Any discussion?
I think the, the final thing that happens with these are due March first. Now, if you approve both of these tonight, then I can complete the district checklist, which, board approval is one of the checklist items, and then sign off, and then that will be sent in. And it also will continue to be worked on all the way through next year. It's, it's like you say, a continuous improvement document.
Any other discussion? All who's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, we have the Area Learning Center FY nineteen ESSA Plan. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented? So, Kirby? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, we have a revision to the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school district calendar due to four snow days on January seventh, January twenty-ninth, January thirtieth, February seventh. Students and staff will make up the four school days on March twenty-fifth, May twenty-eighth, May twenty-ninth, and May thirtieth, full school days. March twenty-second will be a three-hour student early out. Friday, May twenty-fourth, will remain as a three-hour early out. May thirty-first will be a staff development day for certified staff. Certified staff will also make up an additional staff development day originally scheduled for March twenty-fifth. Do you want to comment on that before we ask for a new?
Uh, sure, I can walk through this. You know, it's a lot of days. We've had four days out, seven late starts or early outs. This is the most since I've been here. I think we were looking at, you know, thirteen, fourteen was the last one that had anything close to this. So it's, we're hoping, hoping we're done. I, I think with the four days of the March, the confusing one is probably for staff more than students. The end of the quarter is March twenty-second, and that was a full day, but now it's going to be a half-day so we can have work time in the afternoon for staff for grades. And then the, the normal workday would have been the Monday, March twenty-fifth. Now we're going to school, which was a staff day, so that's the day they have to, additional day that they, that they have to make up. And then students just come to school after the Memorial Day. And this is, we're getting out the normal time we usually get out. We were able to get graduation a little bit earlier this year. Didn't work out very well now that we have to have students back after Memorial Day. But I think it's a nice option and staff are already logging hours to different things, so we'll just, I won't confuse the staff and the students. Students, four days, March twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth of May, twenty-ninth of May, thirtieth of May, then they're done.
So what you're saying, staff is logging, logging hours to take care of the March twenty-fifth?
Correct.
So it's not a June?
Nope, at this time, no. But to be determined, you know, we get a bunch more days, we'll, we'll have to figure out something else.
One thing that a lot of people have asked me about, what about seniors? They're still finished.
They're, the May twenty-fourth, the reason we're still a three-hour early are out, we're getting ready for graduation. So we need people out so we can finalize graduation. They are graduating on May twenty-fourth, correct? They're welcome back, but I don't think they'll come back.
Do we have a motion to approve the revisions as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion of this motion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, we have the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Rese Ferguson School District, five forty-four, has an AIPAC composed of parent guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs. American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals. American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programs, and American Indian representatives from the. in educational programs, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school district affords the AIPAC the necessary information and opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district, whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AIPAC confirms that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute Section 124D.78, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Would somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
I second.
And Missy Segans? Any discussion?
I've been attending their meetings since last spring, going to all of the committees. And Sarah Campa is working really hard with this committee to keep parents and guardians informed.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number five, we have a resolution on the retirement of Connie Torgerson. Whereas Connie Torgerson began her employment with the Ferguson Public Schools in September 1997. And whereas Connie has been a valued employee with the Ferguson Public Schools for the past 22 years. And whereas Connie has done an excellent job as a substitute para, a cafeteria lunch computer operator for the district, now therefore be it resolved by the Ferguson School Board to thank Connie Torgerson for 22 years of dedicated service to the Ferguson Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll do that.
Kirby, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item number six, approval of a contract with U.S. Aquatics in amount of $22,250 plus expenses to design, bid, and administer the replacement of corroded pipes in the pool. Mark Maston, do you want to talk on this motion before we?
Sure, just real briefly, this is a company that, this is all they do is pools. And just seeking their expertise on how to deal with the final piece of metal piping that we have in our pool that is coming to an end of life, that needs to be replaced. It's a difficult job in terms of replacing this. And we need somebody that knows what the heck they're doing, so.
Do I have a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Do I have a second? A second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven is a memorandum of agreement for student training experience internship between the State of Minnesota, acting through its Board of Trustees of Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, on behalf of Minnesota State University Morehead, Morehead, Minnesota, and Ferguson Public Schools, ISD 544. This is effective 8/1 of 2019 through 8/1 of 2024. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is an annual agreement, which has now turned into a five-year agreement, which is kind of nice, you're approving the same thing over and over. So they went to a five-year. We get lots of great student teachers and lots of hires out of Morehead State. So it's a great marriage for us.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this, we will have a work session to talk about the 2019-2020 budget and superintendent finalist interview. Our next scheduled meetings will be a special school board meeting, interviews of the superintendent finalists, Wednesday, February 27th, 2:30 PM at the Otter Community Room District Office Conference Room at Kennedy Secondary School. Special school board meeting, offering of the position of superintendent of schools, Thursday, February 28th, 7:30 AM, right here at the Otter Community Room. And our regular school board meeting will be Monday, March 11th, at 5:15 at the Otter Community Room, right here at Kennedy Secondary School. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? A second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.